All right, we call the work session for August 25th.
Okay. All right, so you all received an email that was hard to read because obviously it's C fix sheets. But you know, we printed for you and we I received numbers from the state on August 1st. And we've been working on these budgets ever since. And so we are proud to show you some very well balanced budget. Obviously, there are things that we could do. Kenny and his department could use more money. Sandy could use more money, you know, for lots of things. So could my department. But we have, we have actually some things. We cut in places in order to be able to actually fund the budget. So currently, right now, you have in front of you is the general fund budget, the first few pages, first three or four pages. The general fund budget, when you look at it, is exactly the same amount at the bottom as what you have. So that's on page four. Forty-four, you know, memorize. Yep. Okay, so on page four, when you look at the bottom, you look in the pink. At the bottom, you see twenty-five budget, nine hundred forty-two thousand three fifty-six. And then you see in the blue to the right, the draft budget we proposed is exactly the same for twenty-six. So we have rearranged a few things and, you know, kind of worked things out within budgets. In order to, it doesn't have to be that way because we do have reserves. So we're, we're gonna, the department heads, we're gonna talk to you about a couple of things, okay? But this is giving you, when I spoke with the DLGF on August 1st, he and I on a Zoom meeting, went through all of our budgets and I said, put in the same numbers we used in twenty-five, tell me where we are. You know, with all of this stuff that the state knows is coming in with the revenues. And so we have very balanced budgets that way. We've included a couple more thousand on MVH than what it was in twenty-five. But you have some options there. So, and I know we're talking community crossing, so we'll all talk about that. So Sandy and I talked about it and Kenny, and so we've worked very well together. It's been great. Actually had it all in Gateway for the first time like by tonight. So because this is a whole separate thing, programming, this is on my own, Gateway is, and I just finished putting it in just a few minutes ago. So we can change whatever you need to change. It won't be that difficult. And you probably have one of the best kind of budgets with us having reserves. So let me just give you a couple other quick.
Who's talking about?
Um, so we have, well, this is like one of my favorite things. Okay, Dave, let's see, you just thanked me. Okay, so MVH, if you turn to page six and you just look at those bottom lines that we go into details, okay? Look at the pink, you know, the two hundred twelve thousand three thirty-nine, that is twenty-five. And right now, we have proposed two fourteen, seven forty-four, a difference of two thousand four oh five. Okay, but we may need to put more street resurfacing or something in there, okay? And then if you will go please to page seven, you will see the CCI fund at the top, that's the cigarette tax money that comes in. It's very small. It pays for IT type stuff. So Sandy's department and my department will need new equipment and we have three thousand budgeted, the same as what we have for this year, okay? We haven't spent any yet, but we have to this year.
We have to this year.
We have to to next year too, so, okay? And then the CCD fund, the next one on the same page. And we still have it at ninety thousand, the same. We don't know if the fire department is going to use thirty thousand or fifty dollars budget that thirty thirty. Right? And then the next page is, page eight is edit, says lit, that's what the state called it now, but it's economic development income tax. And Sandy has completed this budget at the exact same right now as what she has for twenty-five, okay? And we'll go over some of the little notes there. And then page nine is local roads and streets, it is a zero. Because we only had fifteen thousand budgeted for this year. And we paid all of the engineering, we paid fifty thousand dollars in engineering this year. So we have to do an additional appropriations. So there isn't going to be any budget there, no fifteen thousand, nothing for next year. Because we've spent the money, okay? So that's why we need to talk about if we need to take some more money out of reserves out of MVH, okay? Off there. And page ten is low at public safety. So that's the lit for public safety. And Kenny has balanced it to the same. This isn't always possible. So we don't want anybody to think that we, you know, we've cut places. So we've really cut and sometimes that's good and sometimes, you know, you have to go a little more. We're giving you a balanced budget, okay? And then the very last budget is food and beverage. So on page twelve, we've also worked on that and it is the same amount as it is in two seventy-nine, five seventy-five and twenty-five and two seventy-nine, five seventy-five and twenty-six. Now, obviously, there's more money in the fund. If we have something major breakdown, you have to spend over. We just apply for additional appropriation, okay? But we also don't want to broaden it by the state for this particular fund on its, um, this was my first year to have its own separate audit. Besides the reports that we put in. So we want to be as frugal and as financially responsible as possible. But if something happens, then we'll have to, obviously, we'll spend on that, okay? So, department heads, how about we go through the general fund and see if there was anything? Let me tell you the bottom line, how about that, okay? So running all of the revenues that come in and running the property taxes that come in and what we have to spend this year left, if you do a budget of nine hundred forty-two thousand three fifty-six, identical to what you have this year, we will have estimated in reserves operating balance at the end of twenty-six. I will give you these types of things once you finish your budget, okay? Then I'll give you these sheets. Uh, because this is based on what we have right now. We will have one million, four hundred sixty-nine thousand and some odd change in the bank. So we don't have quite two years reserve, about one and a half years reserve in the bank. Which is fantastic, because we don't have a lot of money in the rainy day. Rainy day is hardly anything. So we do have an opportunity at the end of the year to transfer a certain amount, they limit the percentage into rainy day. You may want to think about that. We've kept it right here, but you know, you may want to think about that too for the future. So it goes into rainy day. So you can use rainy day for lots of things, okay? So that way, when I'm not here or other people aren't here, just so it's put away. Okay, so we may want to do that. So some of that money. But you could, if there was a project and there was a need for something else, you would be spending over what you're bringing in, okay? But we have really been very, very physically responsible is why we have the DLGF board totally surprised that we are able to do this. And he was like, that is fantastic. And he couldn't believe how much money we bring in on interest. Because we're doing really well sweeping at night. And he was like, ah, whoa. Okay, so we're in very good shape. We're such a small town. And we are only being impacted by the Senate bill one so far, what we are aware of. We're only being impacted in the property tax cap portion, okay? We were only three hundred and some dollars, don't quote me on this, but last year for two, for twenty-five, like under five hundred dollars. Okay, so the grand total is eight thousand, a hundred and two dollars out of the general fund. That is already calculated in what I just gave you, okay? So we're taking off eight thousand one oh two because we cut budgets. And you get a little revenue each year unless your assessed value drops. Something happened to a block or something in town, if a block, if a block bird in town, not assessed value went down, then we're in trouble, okay? Because then obviously, you know, we're not gonna get as much money. So the state calculates this on eighty-five percent of the current assessed value. So what happens is, obviously, every year it is higher than what this is. So when everything is done in December and the state has the actual assessed value of the town of Nashville, it's always higher than eighty-five percent of what it is this year unless there is some horrible disaster, okay? So then your tax rate goes down and that's how we stay around thirty-four cents always. Okay, so we're doing really well, okay? But if we had a major catastrophe, no. I mean, we have loans, yes. You know, we have loans on the police station, you know, we have loans which are normal. But we have a good cushion. And I remember the last accountants that we had that came in and did the whole budget, not crone, but the other accountants, Baker Tilly, they were totally impressed with what we had in here because they said you have to have at least six months emergency instead of you have a year, well, we have more than a year. Okay, so it's not like we're floating in cash, but if you had to do something, you could. If you had a huge repair to this building, a huge repair to the police station, then in tax dollars, you'd have money to fix something, okay? I mean, we have cars, you know, the, you know, if you have to purchase another car, you could, you know, in the general fund instead of doing loan, loan, loan. But you could, and Kenny's gonna talk to you about his purchase plan for the rest of the fleet. It's, it's actually in this budget. He kept the car payment in the budget of the general fund, the exact same as what it is this year. And Kenny, you want to explain your?
Yeah, I think we've talked about it a little bit when I gave you the complete plan. Um, you know, we bought the two cars, one of them waiting in service last night, the other will go into service next week. And then to move forward, uh, you know, with the amount of money that we have every year, if it's not enough to buy a car, um, car prices keep going up. So the, so the hope is that next year, early in the year, we would buy two cars. And that would put four new cars in the fleet within that six month period of time. But pay for those two cars over a three year period of time. So we paid for those out of the budget of twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight. And then I would just move into an older car, put our part-time guy in the old cars, but then, you know, the other four people would be in a new car. And in theory, that makes the maintenance budget that we have work. Where right now, this year, it's kind of not working. Uh, but with four new cars under warranty and that makes that a viable amount, amount of money to just maintain rather than to repair all the time.
And they're on a rotation basis, so it's not, they're not all at once.
Right.
Which is why.
We would pay off that car twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight and then now I do the same thing again, buy two cars, we paid for all of them for three years. Keep that fleet rotating on a six-year rotation. And I think it's all to maintain, you know, good maintenance and, uh, keep our eye on the mileage of those cars. And obviously, any catastrophic thing, you know, some, some of the happenings, you have a car toll or something, it kind of messes up that rotation. But in theory, I think you can always rely, and I say all, because at some point, they're gonna, the prices of these cars are gonna outpace even what we're doing. But I think if you have your fleet plan set up for seven year rotations, then for the foreseeable future, that continues to work. Because the, I think the cheapest cars that you can buy today, if you're paying the MSRP on the state bid are about forty-eight thousand per car, then you've got a ten thousand to twelve thousand dollar upfitting fee to make the police, you know, to get the police equipment in there.
Are you comfortable with the forty-five, four fifty we talked about, even in the same to make the payment?
And I think at some point in time, you kick that can down the road six or seven years, assuming that these cars continue to increase this six or seven percent every year, you have to reevaluate that. But I don't think you have to reevaluate it anytime in the near future.
So that was, that was his thing. And that is on page four of the general fund budget where it says the, the vehicle, says general admin vehicle. So that's that part. And we put a few notes, um, Sandy had talked.
One point four six nine year end, but you know, so that, we're getting interest on that.
Yes.
And what we move over the rainy day.
We'll still get interest.
Still get.
Still on the same, still on the same checking account. I think we all checking account.
Okay, so just by moving over, it's not like it's.
Right, no, it's not gonna earn us less. It'll learn the same. Yeah, yeah. Right, because you want to make sure that we get interest on it, yes, yes.
Money market or something.
It's a sweep. And so every night it goes out and there's a federal limit of how much you can sweep. So we had to calculate how much we have in the bank and how much we have to be able to have first day in the morning. So it's always there like twelve oh one AM. We always have it if we would have any issue and need the money, they always have it. So, yeah, so far, it's been the best we've ever had. Instead of paying. No, no, it's not a money market. So we can reduce.
Straight to that full percentage.
Oh, yes, plus, yes. Yeah, it's really good. So we're very happy with that. When we were at prior bank, we were paying fees. You serious? Yes. So we were paying fees. We were drawing interest, but we were still paying high absorbent fees compared to what we get where we are. Yes. So anyway, so far, that is working really well unless the bank changes. You know, their policies and everything right now is fantastic for us. Okay, so there are a couple places where, and we have the section where you can write notes. And I see a couple places where I have, oh, I have some sense on here that can't be. So I will round that out because they have to be rounded for the state. So I will do that. It's rounding indeed, anyway, so, um. And then I kind of wanted to comment where we have a note on page two where, and Sandy knows exactly how much those contracts are for the redevelopment commission. That's why we put that in there. So, because she had it ten thousand in landmarks contracts for valuing her. Okay, so that just kind of defines, so we all remember what that money's for, right?
Yeah, that's what I wrote down.
Yeah, I know. So I typed it in here so we have it because that way we can remember.
So the RDC is your redevelopment commission, that's Ed Curtin. Um, and he honestly gives us more than what he charges. And then the landmarks contract, um, that's, they're helping our development review commission. And I've talked to them about kind of stepping that game up a little bit and doing some more training of the commission and it started last night. It was very, a very good first step.
Okay, so that's a comment on there. And then on page three, we have, um, Sandy had talked with Alicia and, um, about our insurance to try to get some idea of, obviously, they don't know exactly, but to get some idea of what it could go up. She said eight to ten percent. We only pay it once a year. We didn't have to raise, we actually lowered this because we, uh, on some places, so we lowered, um, six thousand four fifty on multi-peril because we still have enough, it's up high enough, it's ten percent plus, it's a little bit higher. So this is on page three. So for twenty-five, online item, um, general admin multi-peril liability, which is the second one down on her comment, is twenty-six thousand four fifty for this year. We only spent eighteen thousand ninety-eight. And so, um, I raised it to twenty thousand, we have to twenty because that'll cover us. If we're at ten percent, right, right. So that's how you were able to fund this budget because we cut in places that we do. And our health insurance through AIM medical trust is amazing. It's not raising. It's lowering the regular, but by the time one of those goes up a little, we're even, basically. So Sandy and I are very happy about that.
Yeah, so our medical and prescription didn't increase at all. Did it go down point oh three?
Uh huh, point oh three down.
Uh, the debt went up seven percent, but it's such a minimal number, you know, way, it's negligible. The division is, is even. So we're very fortunate.
Very fortunate. And they told me, we had, um, a representative came from AIM that is a board member who comes and makes sure we're getting the service we need and everything. And he's the one that told me that there is enough money somehow on their reserves that they are going to give us one month free of insurance, which is a big deal. That means employees also get the one month reprieve from insurance, one month a year. Yes, so for next year, we get one month free. So we're so excited about that. So this is even higher than what it will actually be. So this is good, very good. Normally, nothing goes down and then below zero. I mean, it's like, that's, yeah, unheard of.
I think the lowest, the lowest increase that I've seen recently, so, so.
Yeah.
Some years, we look at it, it's thirty percent, it's twelve percent, switch companies.
See, that's what we were doing. And the town was getting ready to have a terrible increase. And AIM came up with their own medical trust. And we were not the first, but they had other cities and towns in it first. And then we joined it, they came and gave a presentation to the town council. And we were able to, we have so many lives at the now, all over the state, that it has such a high reserve, it's doing very, very well. And so they can only have so much in like reserve, maybe why? Not on the board, but there's a way they calculate it by federal laws and everything. And so that's why we're getting a free, three months. We're so excited.
And then we kind of like last year kind of looked around to see if we could just do it on our own. And the numbers were way too high. So because with a little fish in a big pond with all the rest of them, we get a better deal.
Based for when there's like a catastrophe or something.
Yeah, I know some people around here wanted to go to the, what is it, the clinic here.
Yes.
But I cannot get them to give us a low enough rate that it was sustainable for people to use it.
And you're not supposed to lie. I mean, that's something that we all want to go to. The clinic next door. We always want to be interested in this. See, I said, come here.
No, unfortunately, here we're in.
Oh, I lose it, that next door. So the bank and the right hand store, the CRC was, the county and the state. And they can actually, they can go in and if they have prescriptions there, it's only get it for free if they have it. And so it's perfect. But Sandy checked into purchasing it so the town employees could also go there. Because like I say, if they have prescriptions available, you get them free, but it's too expensive.
I got a question.
Yes.
Pay for the people, how much did you?
Do you want to talk about it? Yes, three percent. I did a three percent across the board and we're still able to, because we cut in places, we're still able to fund the three percent.
And the reason I'm saying that, I turned to the brain. County scene.
You heard what?
County one.
None of this.
Yeah, I've heard that too.
No, you were trying to change something. Well, I just didn't get fifty percent.
Perfect, okay. What are you, uh, what are you cutting for the raises? If you really look at it, we, um, so you have to look at, um, twenty-five and then you look at twenty-six.
Page around right now.
So well, any of them. I mean, if you're looking at what we did, some places are more, some places are less.
I didn't know if you had anything specific.
Um, yeah, I mean, like I changed my salary a little bit, a thousand something or whatever. I changed my salary to where I, I am doing more in food and beverage now because of the audit for food and beverage. I only get need eighty and some dollars out of food and beverage. So it's not much. No, that's not much for all that we do in Debbie too. So, you know, we just kind of shifted some things, some things are more, um, let's see, let me tell you one of the bigger ones. It's not just that either. Um, so police, general police holiday pay. Kenny has been able to, um, work it out with his schedule to where we went from twenty thousand four hundred down to seventy to five, okay?
Um, it's back to the, the holidays that we're paying. And part of the holiday pay that we pay, um, is already in the budget under our payroll. So if you add that in, um, times what we're working, we came up with that, with that number is what we would actually really be paying to our people, so.
And you have to remember, other than the police department, the rest of us are all paid out of different funds. So like our billing clerk, Darla, is only paid out of water and sewer because that's what she does, okay? And then the rest of us, we have different hats and you may say thirty-three percent, you know, I mean, it's all different. So, so it's not like everybody's is in the general fund.
Right.
And so most of the, of the guys out in the field, they're water and sewer. And you have one that is, um, your street superintendent is MVH and food and beverage. And he has a little bit in the general fund. Yes, a little bit in the general fund, but not much, only fifty-nine hundred. So you have to take the division to, you know, to calculate it. Um, but a lot of them are the same or a little bit higher or lower. So, um, FICA, because we reduced, like on my, on the CT, like on page one, that's reduced because we reduced how we do a little bit of pay. Okay, and see. It's a little.
On page two, it went down for office supplies, we lowered that.
A thousand, yeah.
That's gonna be okay.
We're gonna make it, we're gonna make it.
Yeah, we're gonna make.
And we lowered at my office, only had five hundred, we lowered a hundred there.
Right. And then the next page on three, Brenda lowered the, uh, the workman's comp.
Yes.
The multi-peril, she said.
Yep.
Um, the phone and internet, you know, Rick.
Yeah.
Well, I have to admit, you all have had extreme need for them. This is impressive.
It's been a very good, this is like one of our best because we, I think because the town's been financially responsible for quite a while now. So we are reaping the benefits of it because, you know, we're not overworked, we've cut. You know, it's not like we're, yeah. So anyway, yeah, on the multi-peril, we've cut six thousand, not quite six thousand, but, oh yeah, over six thousand. It's twenty-six thousand four fifty, it's twenty thousand. So we have made it work. Now, if something happens, then you don't know, but you have the reserve to take care of it. But we don't need to budget higher than what we're gonna spend.
No.
We don't need to do that. Used to be, you had to, remember when we had, we've talked about this each year, but you used to have to advertise sky high. And then all the people in town get all upset because you've got a fifty percent increase. But then when it comes back down and it wasn't, and you're still at thirty-four cents or thirty-five cents, no one understands that. They all believe that you, when it's just like rates, water rates, anything. And they think you went that high. So now the state gives you, they tell us what our levy is, so then you work backwards. And that's what this is. So you know what your levy is. And unless you have something, you're not locked in other than local roads and streets. There is no more money to, for this year, you know, for next year, because we spent it. So, which is fine, you did what you need to do. That's what that fund is for, okay? So let's talk about, let's talk about street resurfacing, okay? Because I know Scott was talking about, that Sandy, it said about another community cross in sort of share.
So for, you have to have it, uh, in about, okay? And it's for twenty, twenty twenty-six, the program's been cut from a million and a half to one million dollars a year. Uh, we're doing one call now, and I think next year they're gonna do another call. So the cut, cut back substantially on the program. We haven't, we haven't used, uh, the fullest extent of what, what's available, but someone like the county is using. They've used, they've taxed it out every year that's been available. So it's gonna, it's gonna impact the county more than us. But I just wanted to see what, if we have anything left at all, we can, we can see what we have as far as it's twenty percent. Now, I can speak twenty-five percent. So if we get twenty percent, then whatever we have, we can put together some contracts and then do probably some resurfacing.
Okay, so in the general, not the general, in the MVH fund currently, we have twenty-seven thousand dollars. It's on page three, second from the bottom. So there's twenty-seven thousand dollars budgeted, okay, out of MVH. And then in CCD fund on page seven is thirty thousand. So that's fifty-seven thousand. So here's where you need to make some decisions. Do you want in MVH, let me tell you what, after running the numbers, let me tell you how much you have. If you do the budget we presented, right, for the two hundred and fourteen thousand seven forty-four, if you do that, I'll tell you what you should have left over on twelve thirty-one of twenty-six, so the end of next year. We should have an operating balance of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So that means we have over a year because we are budgeting two hundred and fourteen thousand. So that means we have over a year, because we are budgeting two hundred and fourteen thousand seven forty-four, so we would have a year's worth. So if you want to add more to this, we could add more to the MVH budget now. And then you would have some money to apply towards community crossings, if that's what you wanna do.
And the alternative would be to not budget additional money and do an additional appropriation.
Correct. But if you budget it, you don't have to spend it, so then we don't have to go through additional appropriations if you don't want to. I mean, we always have to anyway, every year for something, so, uh, you know, but you guys need to think about what you wanna do.
The engineered cost for a purpose sidewalk is really substantial.
Right.
It's anywhere from thirty-five to fifty percent of the, the cost of construction. Like to see if there's any area that we can pave without the full engineering documents for urban sidewalk. Got any money left, are there any streets that don't have ramps or something that we wouldn't impact and we resurface those and? Just do what we can and every year do a little more, maybe next year we could. Hire an engineering company to do something more, but I think we can, we can put together a contract document pretty easily for resurfacing. You don't have to have plans or anything, just one piece and a budget.
Does. Patching, that what I'm trying to say, um, crack sealing.
Crack sealing.
Is that an option?
Yeah, you can do crack sealing.
Um, cause I know Jamie's talked about that, he's like, it makes him crazy because I don't understand it. He's like, if you don't fix the cracks, they keep getting bigger and my road, the roads away, so if we could get that fixed.
Or, or like town or lanes has done a lot of crack sealing.
How, how was it last year or when?
Say last year, five years, and it's a, it's a maintenance thing that keeps it from. So if you, if you do the crack sealing, the, it's, your pavement's not gonna get all the water, the joints, it's not gonna freeze. So it's not gonna bust up, so maybe the seal itself lasts five years, but, but if you didn't do it, you'd have to, you'd be doing. Truck over repairs and things like that.
So the money that we spent this year is the money for the CCMG project, right? For the project that, to DLZ, okay, cause that's what we spent out of local roads and streets.
Yeah, I know that was expensive for the engineering fees. Uh, but we, we've got, the, the project went through, came in, came in very low. And it, uh, my plan was to inspect and help and I didn't really have to, everything went very well.
You know, I hate to say it to me, I'm worse than others.
Yes, it is, Andy Rogers way, however, we already had a hook that wanted it out and what was, what was.
Many though. Yeah. Which I, which I disagree with, I'm no engineer, but I disagree with it, so.
If you wanna black, I mean, we could paint it black without asphalt, but it's, you, you gotta be careful with contractors and these.
Right, yeah. How about that one in Parkview, Hillside? It's just a little, a little spot, but sure. Talking about stripper that we did, Jamie didn't realize it was ours. I still call that a little strip, but yes, I know what you're talking about, yeah, there's a spot in, in Parkview. That's why maybe half a block, no, it's not even that long.
Really?
I think it was longer than that. I think it's probably the length of this room.
I think Sandy and I and Jamie could sit down and look at the streets and come up with a budget and submit that application. And then ball up with some contract documents, I've got a little more time this winter, I can.
Okay.
I think we can do that all in houses, uh, I don't think we need a consultant for that.
I, I agree, I mean, Scott, Scott's been super helpful.
Some other communities do, uh, for resurfacing, it's just, it's a list of qualities with the street.
Yeah.
And they say, well, you know, what does that do? Well, there's so many tons you put down, there's this and that. And we'll help you if you need to know where to put it down. But it, it, it will cost very much to.
And you have Dave, I mean, when you've not been able to be here, Dave has been every day on site at no project, so I think we've got a great.
I don't wanna sell them, uh, contract documents, prices. Be there, sell their representative Dave, Brett will be there.
Well, I always buy all the time, so it's okay.
Yeah. But so are you asking to take some of the money in our reserves and put it into the budget so we have it?
Uh, I'm, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that whatever we wanna spend, we can, we can get it four times that.
Gotcha.
Or five, five times now. So if we've got twenty thousand, we can get a hundred thousand. We don't wanna, we don't wanna stretch our budget or anything, it's not a have to thing. What we, uh, what we do is just, it's gonna be maintenance and. Further resurfacing, but I don't think we wanna lose the, the opportunity to have all those funds, but.
No, well, I, we have to figure out how many years that the government will be doing.
That's, you know. That's my problem, making it right up.
That's what I worried about.
It's, uh, so this is, this is kind of small, small dollar things that we can do, the, the big picture things. That are complicated, that we need engineering services for are. Are mainly sidewalks and drainage and things like that, which.
Getting the curves and everything, right?
So we would probably need to look at federal aid or something.
So could I suggest maybe we, we take twenty thousand from reserves and throw it into what's being budgeted? I'm just thinking about winter again, and if your MVH budget might get blown up just by winter.
We gotta do that last month.
Yeah.
So if we get hit again, you know, we're gonna hang that.
Uh, that would be a little, I would, usually we have available, be a little conservative, a little more, like. You know, you're getting, if you said, hey, if you. We, we can give you five times whatever you invested in, I mean, that's. A five hundred percent return on your investment.
Are you saying then add twenty thousand to it, or are you thinking?
So, we have fifty-seven thousand.
Because we had twenty-seven in MVH on page five. And, um, we have money in the CCD fund, so, yeah, we have thirty thousand there on page seven. So, but MVH, you have some reserve that you could take money out of that.
And that reserve was a hundred and fifty-eight, right?
No. Yeah, so we're well more than a year.
So fifty-seven thousand, we get to a two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar project, and with the price of asphalt right now, that would be substantial.
Yes.
Do you extend?
It's really competitive.
Hello?
Yeah, two eighty-five, that would be a lot.
That would be awesome.
We, and with that, if we're, if we're gonna do that much, we're, we're gonna back up and play our parts. We may, we may do a small contract, but. Build a hundred thousand, I think we could do that, but not sure if the need, I mean, this is almost as big as what we did this year.
So, Joe, are you ready to put it in, or do you think that's enough?
I'd say, I'd say we go with somewhere around three hundred, a little less than three thousand, I think that would do, we'd do a lot more.
So we're adding the twenty in?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, this is up to that, so if it comes in lower, we've got less, but you said it was twenty-seven thirty K.
Uh huh.
I think I, I'm all right with. Using that to leverage that for CCMG.
So fifty-seven thousand?
But if all of that is gone and I've got nothing to do.
Anything else.
To pay for anything else.
Right. So would you be paving anything else?
What, I guess what I'm saying is, if I use fifty-seven.
Uh huh.
For paving, isn't, that means I don't buy gas and stuff?
No, 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 it's just paving, yes, just paving, so you'll be fine, you'll be fine now, it's been a long week. And we're only on Wednesday, right, so I, I, so, no, 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 you have gas and everything. This, that money would, if we just keep it at the fifty-seven thousand, then the twenty-seven thousand's already in your VH budget, so we won't be taking out any more. And thirty thousand is in CCD fund.
And that's used just for paving.
Right, just paving. You have gas and everything.
That would be a good project. Compared to other communities that I know I'm able, Orleans and West Bay Springs. It's a little town of Claremont, they don't have a lot of money, they're kind of like us, and they do some really great things with just small amounts, even with. Seventy-five thousand for the whole contract.
But the roundabout that we were talking about, Snyder.
It's. Probably get us to the generic.
Hey, look, roundabouts are a great idea.
I agree.
Okay, two. Get too mad at the roundabout.
I know.
But I think. So I, I think that, you know, if we could leverage that fifty-seven thousand.
Okay, alright, so that, so we're not gonna change that, okay? Now.
And I'll just, I'll just add that there's more than just, uh, you mentioned crack sealing, that's another option we could. Do, and I think that Jamie could help us with the need, the need for that. There's several other optional treatments that we can do, other than just lay in an inch and a half of surface over every line, there's a. A product called micro-surfacing, that's, it's almost like sand, it, it looks like. Sand in the liquid asphalt, it's a sealer.
So Jamie actually had a company come out and, and show us that on some spots out here. Uh, I know that it's been down for a while, I'm okay with it, but that day I was gouged and people were driving and rocks were coming up at me. And I was like, this is a pot, and I was like.
By accident.
That's what that looks like.
But it had good sense, excuse me, it's been good sense.
I think it's okay now when you drive over it, you'll see, it's just, it looks like a coat of asphalt.
I see those, yeah.
But he got them to, to show us what it looked like and found really bad spots and hadn't filled it in.
Residential neighborhood, and I thought this is the worst idea I've ever heard of, and they're gonna, they're gonna put micro. Microsurface on this whole neighborhood, I said, these people are gonna be all right, it's, it's built from the eighties, it kind of looks, looks a lot like Hardest Drive. And I thought, these people are gonna be absolutely all right, and we did it. And it's, it's perfect in its last, the last, you know, five to ten years. It's, it's gritty, you, you're, you got a lot of traction on it, and I think, I think we could probably do some of that here, but people's initial. Response to it is they just, they just cover that with cat litter and asphalt, is what it looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's bound to luck too, driving a construction.
Yeah. How cheap could they be and everything, and then they kind of look at it later on, it's like, well, this stuff really works.
Yeah. Okay, so council, questions? Any questions, um, any questions? Of department heads, anything to add? I mean, you guys are sitting on a pretty good budget, I see two of you're sitting on a real bad budget, so. It's like, now, the council, I did not put an increase in for council, if you would like an increase, then you need to let me know. Um, everyone's been saying every year, do not, do not, if you.
I say, do not.
Weren't the same as the county council, is that correct?
No, now he makes this.
That's not, they may, more, well, how do I wanna say this? They give you insurance and they go.
They give you insurance, do they still? I don't know. But I have to tell you that from the salary, like surveys through aim, Nashville's very well paid for our size. So, but if you didn't really like to, then we, of course, can. Well, but we are right there.
I don't see rope, so I'm just trying with where it is.
Okay, if that's what you wanna do for this year, and now we need to talk dates. Okay, because we set another, I have to advertise this, so we, uh, you're not making any decisions, we're just advertising, you don't even. Adopt the budgets until that last meeting, so you have a public hearing, next year we have to do two public hearings. Because the laws change, so there'll be two public hearings instead of one.
Two.
Yes, but not for this year, so, I know. Hey, you'll, you'll be happy my third date.
Yeah, I, I, uh, I'm just kept some things out and love Raptors, but I. About Raptors, I'm gonna help out the bank with some stuff.
That's a whole time.
You know.
That's good.
A little more time.
Oh, God.
They can't go away, they just got.
Okay, so we need to, I have to advertise this in Gateway, and so we have to have the dates. And I had a little note somewhere of the dates that we had set. We were going to have, I sent the minutes to, we were going to have a, uh, a meeting on nine-two. That was gonna be our next meeting to go over this, a work session, but we don't. Unless, we, I don't believe you need a work session, so you're probably ready.
I'm very happy with what you have.
And with the others, yes, that's what I'm really, I'm pretty helped.
Yeah.
I sent you an email that said how much everyone helped and I appreciate.
God.
Woo, so sorry, so we don't need the public?
I mean, you don't need the work session on, especially.
No.
I'm very happy, you, you guys have done, all of you.
Yes.
I think Brenda, it was September twenty-third.
And I agree with the, the change that Scott mentioned, I mean.
Well, we're meeting.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, good.
And that we can do a great project for that honey, that's great.
And the fact that you were able to.
Yeah, very good.
The budget, where else, the public hearing was, you said Tuesday, September twenty-third at six-thirty.
Is that when we had schedule?
Yes, that's, read to my notes, that's what you all said.
But guess what? What? Because none of this is set yet, so since we don't, we were putting everything off because we were gonna meet again. On September second, and I honestly could even put this in tomorrow, because I have it all in. And so tomorrow I could just go.
Okay, let me think here.
Okay.
Before everybody stabs me in the back again. We were voting this budget tomorrow, aren't we?
You can't vote on anything, you're not doing anything but advertising it, all you're doing is. All you're doing is saying, it's okay if for me to take these numbers, put them in Gateway and advertise a public here.
That would be good.
And that's all you're doing, okay? But at the same time, we have to advertise the public hearing and the adoption date. So.
Which could be how quick?
Ten days after.
Okay, then we could be here for fifteen minutes, ten days later and have a meeting and say you did good.
And the very, yes, and the very last day to adopt it is November third, is the very last day, which we won't need to wait.
No, that's why we've been getting done, as in done.
Your voice changed, we said that.
Because that all my stuffs and they're slow.
So Brenda, what, what is your?
Well, I'm suggesting, so today's the twentieth. So if I would put it in to, let's say, the twenty-second. And that's Friday, because I'm gonna go over every single number again, obviously, because I had to manually type it in to Gateway.
Okay.
And so the numbers, the bottom line is right, but I'm gonna go over every single number again. Okay, so let's say I do all that tomorrow, I submit it on the twenty-second, then we have to wait ten days before we have a public here. Two, three, six, seven, eight, nine, ten days would be September first, which is Labor Day, so obviously we're not gonna be on Labor Day. So we could have a public hearing, what we talked about on Tuesday, the second, if people are around. Or, since you were available on Thursdays.
Mm-hmm.
Thursday, so. Nurse, do you know who the exam?
You don't.
You don't know, okay, okay. So we just have to make sure we have a forum.
Brett, she said you're not available, that way.
I don't, just don't.
You didn't know yet, yeah, so, okay.
But here's my thing, you all kind of already blocked the second, so you wanna keep it on the second, or do you wanna do it?
I'm advised of the second, it's, I'm like.
And there's checks, so the, we're, we're not gonna move any money into the rainy day fund?
We can do that at the end of the year, you have to wait till like the end of the year and then you can move the money. So we could do it at the end of this year, but we don't have to budget that.
Okay.
Okay, so, but we could do it at the end of this year if we want it. We have to do it by, and work in a sort of resolution to do it, okay? So we're gonna keep the, the second, and what time do you wanna have the public hearings, six thirty, like normal, or? Six thirty, so that way the public.
We six thirty?
I'm waiting.
The September second at six thirty?
Is that a thirty?
That's fine.
Well, I wouldn't even.
Six thirty to six forty-five.
And then we have to wait ten days before we adopt, you could adopt this at your council meeting on the eighteenth, you wouldn't have to have a special meeting. That's what I would do.
That would be fine.
That's what I would do, and then you don't have to wait, I mean, you don't have to have a special meeting.
And it's done.
Yep, it's done, September eighteenth.
Did we have anything else on the calendar that you take off? Did you say the twenty-third?
The twenty-third, so I'm changing that to the second.
Yes, that's so awesome. It's on the eighteen of September. And that would be the date, we can adopt it on the eighteen and be done with it. You don't have to go.
This is a reminder, you'll have a long.
She's gonna be here, baby.
If you say it one more time, it won't be.
Anyway, I, I guess my comment is I'm honored to work with people who are. Appreciative of the financial status of the town, very much so, and care about. The citizens and everything, I just think it's really good, we all have it in our heart and I think that's how it works so well.
I'm just so happy with us, and so many things have gone this year.
Me too.
This has been.
Me too.
You're answering the budget.
Kenny knows all the Christmas lights up, aren't you, Kenny?
He's got help.
Well, my payment last year was late.
They were several months late.
Yeah.
I know.
But you got them, right?
I don't think you put a thirty day notice on those cookies. So if payment was not late.
No, I just get.
You got plenty of cookies and you can only eat two.
Are you adjourning the work session?
Yeah, the meetings adjourn.